We will begin the commission meeting. Please note that all commissioners are present with the exception of President, Commissioner Engen, he is away on business and so is Mr. Ford. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have an approval on a second assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ross.
I have three additions I would like to add to the agenda.
Okay.
One is a building modification for the officer's office downstairs.
All right, we will put that at 4H, building modification.
And then the sheriff has a J grant.
All right, we will add that under five and that would be 5B for the sheriff for the J grant.
And then the auditor has something also.
Okay, and Finance Director, we will put for Ms. Nelson after 7A, which would be 7B. All right, so that is your motion to make those changes with the current agenda. Does someone want to second that motion? Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. We have bills, employee status changes, overtime, a game of chance permit for the Air Force ball planning committee. And then June financials report. Anything to be pulled? If there's nothing to be pulled, does someone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item under 4H is the building modification and Mr. Gerseski is not here.
Okay. I was forwarding a message you had, Chair.
Yes.
And what this is, that they would like to have a motion at the start of Tuesday's meeting today. Change order for the glass wall and the finance and tax removed from the scope and HVAC improvements and F and T removed from the scope of the first floor south COVID safety improvements project to the agenda.
Okay, and so that is what the change order is?
Correct.
All right, and I understand that that will be less funding, less funding than what is currently in the plan, correct?
Yep.
All right, did someone like to make an agenda to approve that change order?
Motion to amend the project in the Finance and Tax Office as indicated by Commissioner Ross.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the Grand Forks Planning and Zoning Board appointment.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Pete Coon was the only one that applied for the position. He is currently serving and his term will expire the beginning of August. And although the planning, the City Planning and Zoning Commission does not make recommendations, I did get a recommendation from Mr. Brooks.
Right, Brooks. Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to appoint Pete Coons to the Grand Forks Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. We need to have another motion for the Grand Forks Commission to reappoint Mr. Coon. We're good? Okay, then the next item on the agenda, item number six, is the inmate communication proposals. No, what?
By B.
Oh, by B, I'm so sorry. Yes, we have Sheriff to speak about the J grant. I apologize, Sheriff Schneider.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My apologies for not getting this on the agenda in a timely manner. We received notification of the J grant that we receive on an annual basis. It was approved, I believe, last Thursday. I want to bring it before the commission for Chair's signature. Madam Chair, from my approach, I have copies, real look over.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Like I said, this is a J grant. If you recall, last year, the city defaulted and applied in time. Therefore, our support staff, Michelle Wilson, applied for the grant and had to overtake the management of the grant because the city realized they missed it. So we managed this grant for them last year. This year, they were on time and caught it. What we're looking for is about $5,500 in funds from this grant. It's going to help the sheriff's office specifically in hearing protection. And we're also putting in for earpieces, hearing pieces for our new radios that we've obtained, obtained that should be going online here in the next month and a half to provide more security for our officers and whatnot. Like I said, I'm looking for Chair's signature on this so I could return it to the city for the mayor's signature as well. I stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, is any commissioners have any questions of Sheriff Schneider?
It's a win for us, right?
Yeah, every year.
That's all I mean.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve that J grant.
Okay.
Application for signature.
All right, is there a second to Sheriff Ross's commission or to Commissioner Ross's motion? Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Okay, wonderful. I will make sure that you get a signed copy of this. All right, then the next item on the agenda is item number six, the inmate communication proposals. Ms. Wongstead, were you going to speak on them or was Mr. Burke Holder going to speak?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I can briefly summarize the state of the law as our office has researched. A party that is a, is a person who can appeal a decision of the Board of Commissioners to District Court within 30 days after the decision of the Board of Commissioners. The burden of proof is on the party challenging the decision of the Board of Commissioners. And they are to show that it's the product of a rational mental process by which the facts and law relied upon are considered together for the purpose of achieving a reasoned and reasonable interpretation. And I stand to answer any questions that there are.
Mr. Burke Holder, do you wish to share any information based on what Ms. Wongstead shared with us?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I believe Ms. Nelson has scanned the documents that you have provided last week. And I think the summary on the bottom of it would be the page that did the comparison between the two RFPs best summarizes what the committee looked at and the reasons, the rational reasons that were utilized in determining which vendor to recommend. It's right there. And if there were any questions, I will gladly answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's actually Ms. Wongstead. I don't mean to kick off guard either, but I think last commission meeting, you gave us also a definition as to overturning what we previously did.
I think Mr. Falk, members of the commission, because the commission has already made a determination as to whom is the lowest responsible bidder. If the commissioners decided to change their opinion, it would be helpful to indicate what factors are the board is weighing in coming to a different conclusion so that if the matter is a field, the county can show that it was part of a rational mental process.
I think you might have said something, so that it isn't arbitrary, deprecious.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, the commission has already voted on Homeway as the vendor that will be providing the services for the, for the prison. We did have someone who came back and disagreed with our decision, Reliance. We do have, we did hear information from Reliance and from Homeway on that information. The committee, the committee at the jail, I believe, did take a look at the information that had been reviewed. And right now, at the bottom of the screen, we're reading that if the award were not to, if the award were not to go to Homeway, based on proposals, Reliance would not be the second choice. And CIC and in cartel have better rates, higher communications, commissions, and guarantees than Reliance. It is the continued, it is the continued recommendation of the inmate communication commissary committee to recommend Homeway. Right now, the commission has approved Homeway. Does anyone on the commission want to repeal the previous, the previous motion that was made in a previous meeting granting Homeway the, as the vendor for this solicitation?
I have a question.
Yes.
So would the other two then, if Reliance isn't the second choice, would the other two, are they local?
Commissions or not, members of the commission, I don't have their proposals with me on hand, but no, they would not be considered local. They are likely, I think, Texas for NCIC and cartel. It's either Texas again or out east.
And so how different are they from Reliance?
The best, the best summary would be the one page that shows every vendor, all eight of them that bid. And it's a spreadsheet that looks.
I got it.
Yeah. And again, what I, as I told you last meeting, is as a committee, we highlighted in green things that were more favorable by one vendor over another. And you look at N cartel and NCIC, for example, their cost per minute for phone rates is either 16 cents or 18 cents. Reliance's was 25 cents. So it's a greater than a 25% decrease. They have N cartel proposed an 80% commission. NCIC, 65%. Reliance did not have a commission. They had a flat, a flat rate. They were going to pay $58 per inmate per month. Just so happens, both of those two companies also gave a flat rate, a minimum monthly guarantee. Meaning that if the volume was greater, they would pay something greater. That was stated in the proposal. That was not stated in Reliance's proposal. Reliance was going to pay $58 a month, no matter the volume. N cartel was going to pay it or would pay $180,000 based on an average population of 200 inmates. That's $75 per month per inmate. In other words, $17 a month per inmate, greater than what Reliance would do. So their commission is going to be substantially more. Their rates to the public are going to be 25 to 40% less, saving every citizen in the county that funds this 25 to 40%. Those without question were huge factors. Fees. Transaction fees is another big item. Many of these entities charge for the public to put money on an inmate's account. So if you go online to one of these companies' websites to put money on an inmate's account, if you want to put $100 on there, they're going to charge your credit card something greater than $100. Reliance would charge $106.30. And N cartel would be $100, $102.99. NCIC, $103, and Homeway, $102. When you look at all the funds that are put on, there's a lot of fees there. So again, when you look at that, both N cartel and NCIC, less fees to the public than what Reliance was proposing. That and the fact that the commission rate that we were getting from Reliance, when we calculate that backwards, does work out to be approximately 35%. 35% gives us about $58 a month per inmate. We use that to determine how these other ones compare because Reliance did not bid a percentage. They were the only vendor not to. So we had to extract to see what that meant. And I sent, one of the documents I gave you last week shows exactly how that was computed. That's exclusive of all the fees and everything. That is only on expenses for the phone service. So the transaction piece for the web is not included. So the $6.30, the $3, the $2.99, the $2, it's included. And that is just what the phone charges are. And I think that's a very fair comparison then when you look at that. And Homeway's proposed rate of 65%, we as a committee looked at that and thought, yes, there are going to be some fees on that. But there's not going to be 30% or more in fees. When we look at what the fees are, we're anticipating something less than 15%. That being said, the percentage rate of Homeway would be 15% greater than Reliance. Right now, the volume that we're doing, and that's also on one of your pages that I gave you last week. Oh, no, it's not. I showed you what last year was, 59.56. This year, we're approaching $90 right now, per month per inmate. If the Reliance contract was in place right now, we would be getting $58 a month. And that would be it. If N cartel, Homeway, or NCIC's contract were in place, we'd be getting that $90 a month per inmate.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Burke Holder? If not, then I will repeat what I said before. This commission, in a previous meeting, voted on what vendor would be used at the, at the county jail. The vote went forward and I believe it was unanimous that that Homeway would be used. It went through, it was voted on. There was an appeal. The appeal later came up. The appeal was heard. The information was heard, both from the, the company that was appealing as well as the company that had received the, the agreement or had received the vote on which company would be awarded the, the contract. So at this point, if there is no one who wants to come forward with appealing this process, the current, the current vendor that we have chosen in a previous meeting will go forward with the vote that we had. Does anybody at this point want to take and make a motion to repeal the previous contract for Homeway? Again, I will repeat. Does anyone in the chamber of the commission, sitting here, want to appeal a motion, to appeal the motion that was made, to appeal the, the award that was given to Homeway as the new contractor to be used at the Grand Forks County Corrections Facility? If there is no appeal that comes forward, then Homeway will continue to be devoted on and contracted company that will be providing services and working with you, Mr. Burke Holder, to provide the services at the Grand Forks County Correctional Facility.
There we go.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you all very much for participating in this process. It is very much appreciated. Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the Northeast, excuse me, is the Northeast Human Services lease amendments. Okay, thank you, Ms. Wongstead.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the leases were included in the commission packet. However, I would just note that we've been provided a slight amendment to those leases, specifically the, not the parking route lease, that's the same as in your packet. The county office building lease was amended to attach and incorporate the footprint that was previously mapped, that was provided to the Board of Commissioners. Just so it's clear what their footprint is changing, what it was previously. So that map is just attached and incorporated into that lease.
We shall talk about that.
Madam Chair, members of the commission? No, we do not, because we just received it, was it yesterday? So it's just the same map that you've seen about the area that they are going to be releasing or the, and the area that you will be using. So that's now what's included with the lease. We'll now have those pictures of the area.
Before the, before July 1 of 2021, the lease office space was 40,040 square feet. And now they are going down. Northeast Human Service Center will be leasing 36,240 square feet, a decrease of 3,800 square feet. This lease will go from July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2023. Is that correct?
That's right. Do you want to see a picture, the pictures that will now be attached?
They are going down by 3,800 square feet in this next two years.
So my question is, is so we're talking about wings. And so is that like a quarter of a wing that we will?
Yeah, it looks like it on the map.
So, and how long have we extended this out further than what the norm or what we had before? Or were we tied into 2023?
As effective July 1. No, it's not extended any longer.
So no matter, it's two, two years, always been, they had, their current lease has always been until 23.
Two to the end of the year.
Yes, when? Because I just don't want to, I mean, a quarter of a wing isn't a lot. It's like, well, what are we going to do with that? And I didn't want to extend it out any further than it's extended already because then we're just tying any avenues that we have, we have needs. And my guess is that going forward, that the state's probably going to reduce that even further in years to come. And I, you know, we're in a dirty earth. And that, to me, is not usable, going to be useful space. I don't know what we would be able to put in there or what department we would be able to put in there without doing a lot more, probably reconstructing in there. And so I just don't want to tie us up. And I mean, we, we need space and you know. And I, you know, I know that there are other wings that are, there's many offices on those. Particularly Fifth Fourth on the South Wing. There's lots and lots of space up there that's sitting vacant. I mean, it just would seem like we could try, or they could try to move the North Wing or whatever it is that we're talking about here, combine those over on Fifth, so. I mean, something that's going to work for all of us. I mean, and they're doing this and we're doing this. You're getting a real sweet deal price-wise because we're reducing our price, right? Per square foot?
Not per square foot, but whatever.
So I mean, we're losing all the way around. It shouldn't be that way.
I think the problem is, though, on Fifth South, there's not nearly, almost 7,000 square feet to move where they're at. And I don't think there's 7,000 square feet free up there.
No, not on Fifth. There is space up there. That's where my office is. But you know, but I think on the other floors, there's open space as well. So I mean, I think that we should at least have that conversation if they can do something where they can combine their departments, the other three wings. And yeah, they might be crowded, but like I say, a quarter of a floor is of no use for us and we're getting a lot less money. I can't support it.
What are the wishes of the rest of the commission?
Madam Chair, I'm going to move to approve the lease. I don't disagree with Commissioner Ross. I don't like it either, but there's not much else we can do about it right now. And it's a short-term lease for two years. And I think in the next two years, we need to decide if they're going to be a long-term tenant or not, and how we're going to deal with it. But I think for the short term, we really don't have any other choice but to keep them on. I agree, they're probably going to rent, rent less space the next
I agree, they're probably going to rent, rent less space the next time around also. Maybe we can find something to do with that space. We're not going to be able to rent it out. I know that, but the department's going to use some of it. It is what it is, I'm afraid.
So my only question, Commissioner Foulke, is, is why is it we don't have a choice? Why, why don't we? I mean, why don't we have a choice?
Well, if they're going to look elsewhere, then we'd be faced with a lot of empty space up there. We had two wings free. And there's a lot of space in town right now. That's there are rent signs all over the city, so.
Okay, at this, at this time, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There is no discussion. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, and my motion would be for the, my vote would be for the motion. So at this point, it would be three votes to one, so the motion does pass. The next item on the agenda is Finance and Tax Director, Ms. Nelson.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, uh, June first, I asked you to pass a motion to for, so we'd have formal policy on interim fund for the general fund at twenty-five percent. And although we do have an interim fund for some of our other funds, I would like it to be consistent and I'm, and to main, maintain the financial stability of Grand Forks County, I would like a formal policy to set the interim fund at ten percent for all other levy funds except for the general fund, pass-through funds, and the road fund.
Okay, you've heard one of the items that Ms. Nelson wants to discuss is to set the interim fund at ten percent. Is there any discussion on that? Any questions of Ms. Nelson? What are the wishes of the commission?
Can I, can I have a question?
Yes.
And then the general and the pass-through and the road funds would be twenty-five?
Pass-through would be nothing, because it's just an in and out. The money comes in, the money goes out.
Right.
And the road, they don't have money for an interim fund.
Good. Bad for them.
And the general fund would be twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five, I'll guess, I heard that.
Madam Chair, we make a motion to approve that ten percent.
Interim fund?
Interim fund.
Okay, that meets your needs. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
There is one other item I would like to bring up today, and no action, I don't see no action today, just to think about this. I, I anticipate that we will have about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars more in estimated cash at the end of the year. Would you give the money back to the taxpayers, or if there's another urgent need for the county, that money could be set aside, or the law enforcement building, for example, or some other reason? So maybe at the next meeting, I will ask for your thoughts on that money.
Okay. So that's basically just a sharing of information and think about that. Okay.
Bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, State's Attorney, Ms. Womsted. Do you have anything to report?
Any question?
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is committee reports. The first person is Ms. Knopf.
Committee reports. On the fourteenth, Fair Board met. We had a good year. Right now, I don't have exact figures, but our known revenue to date was roughly a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And carnival admittance, and carnival admittance was about, that was up forty-six thousand dollars. And so overall, overall, the fair brought about twenty-four thousand dollars more than what we normally would do, or more than revenue than the past two years. And fairs typically don't make money. We go backwards, and so it was a good year. So
Wonderful.
We, yes, we're happy about that. And then on the fifteenth, I met with the interim, the Extension Office, Caitlin. She just wanted to interview a commissioner, talk about the role of the commission. And so I did that on the nineteenth. Is that yesterday? Yep. I attended the Public Input Meeting for potential, for the Laramore Dam Rehab. And that was out in Laramore. It was a planning committee or planning meeting. There were about forty, maybe just fifty people that were in attendance. The dam's in, in fairly good condition, good shape, but they're looking to bring it up to the current state and federal dam safety standards, which then will extend the life of the dam for the reservoir for another fifty to a hundred years. The, the dam was constructed in nineteen seventy-nine, so it's roughly forty-two years old. And the biggest concern, I think, right now that my takeaway on that meeting was the spillway. I think it's in Berthyn Spillway, and so that was built, that's how they did them. That was the, the way they went. And with new spillways and things like that, there were, like concrete steps almost. And so that's what they would be looking at, because if you do have water that goes over, goes through the spillway, you have a propulsion, and that whole reservoir. And there's about I got some figures here, a little more than forty-three thousand acres that would be affected if that spillway breached. And so that's substantial, and that doesn't include the possibility for homes, livestock, people's lives, that sort of thing, or anything that might be in the way. And so if this does, like I say, it's just the planning stages, if they do, if this is approved, it would be federal government, I believe that is, that they would pay for that. And so that we would be looking at roughly, I think it was two thousand twenty-seven before it would ever be done. So it's a long way out. There's a lot that goes into the planning. With something like this, there's fifty, fifty dams in North Dakota, and they're looking to add six more. And there's fourteen of them that are considered high-hazard dams, and Laramore is one of them. And so it's really important that they are paying attention to that. They did a tour of the dam today, but I didn't go for that. So also yesterday, emergency management, we had our meeting, and Supari and the team have been working on a, an after-action report. And Supari will report on that. Is that next month, or do you want to do that today? Okay, we'll do it next month. And basically, it was just to talk about gaps that we saw during COVID, things that needed, you know, as far as relative to COVID, it would be like staffing, agencies, resources, preparedness, that sort of thing. So that's a requirement of the state, and so they will be extending some time doing that. Also, emergency management is getting health alerts and information relating to the Delta variants. And so, and there's some other severe variances that are anticipated that we might see by following. Supari has asked, we talked, and she's looking to brief the full commission on that at our next meeting, and so she will be on the agenda. Also with the relation to the emergency management, they're having their North Dakota Emergency Managers Conference that's going to be starting August thirtieth. And so I'm requi, or they are requesting, much like we do when we go to the North Dakota Conference of Social Welfare, you know, they have a draw, or gift, what do they call them? When we bring door prizes, yes. And, and so we always do that as commissioners, but the North Dakota Emergency Managers Conference, what they are looking for are gifts, but they all will be auctioned off, and that money will be used towards emergency management kinds of needs. And so we talked a little bit about that, and I'm going to donate some things as, or some of the others, but what I'm wondering is that, is there some fund that we can tap into where we could maybe get something equivalent to what commissioners get to help pay for this gift that they can auction off and make money? Supari shouldn't have to do it out of her own pocket, which she has said that she would do, but I'm saying no. That, that's, that should come from the county. She also is, come August first, going to be the chairperson of the Emergency Managers Association. And so that's a real feather, and perhaps a real benefit to us. And so, but I just said, if there would be monies available that we could tap into to help with that.
Do you have the dollar amount in mind?
No, no dollar amount in mind.
Fifty dollars.
You know, for commissioners, we spend a hundred dollars generally. And so I
That hundred dollars.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, it could be taken out of the county general, that's all I guess.
So that would be my request to the commission, please consider that, because emergency management doesn't have funds available for things like that. They live on a very limited, limited budget. And so if, if we could do something like that, it would be most beneficial for them. And so and the only other thing I had was tomorrow's library board meeting, Thursday is City to Farm Event, and that's the Drews Farm, and I do intend to go to that. And Manville Day is on Saturday, and Northwood has their, their Saturday, their old-fashioned Saturday all weekend, actually, so speaking of fun. So I guess the only matter I have is if the commission would consider using some funds then from the general fund to help with that along with the Emergency Managers Conference.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, uh, not in favor, same sign? The motion is carried. Thank you for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I remember the question, was it a hundred dollars?
One hundred dollars.
What was the amount?
One hundred dollars, correct. Okay, Commissioner Ross.
MTO tomorrow. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Foulke.
I attended a meeting with Human Resources and Mr. Burke Holder, his staff, about hiring and retention of correctional officers, which is an ongoing problem, much like it is with all the jobs in the city. And they had some interesting thoughts. Hopefully, they can come up with some ideas to improve our our ability to retain correctional officers, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. After myself, Commissioner Ross and I were available on Wednesday of last week to attend the Red River Rough Rider Awards for the Lamrew sisters, and both him and I were acknowledged by the governor and by the mayor. It was a very nice event that was put on, so we were glad to be available for that. The, the Airport Authority Board meeting is coming up this week. I think that is all that I have to report. Under unfinished new business, the North Dakota Association of Counties Convention is coming up. That will be, let's see, October third through the fifth. It is at the Bismark Events Center. This is being both available. It's a two-day event. It is available either online or in person. So if you are interested in attending online or going in person, please inform Ms. Nelson of that. So arrangements can be made.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this conference starts on a Sunday, the third, and it goes Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Tuesday's the commission meeting. So I'm wondering if you want to change that first commission meeting from fifth of October to a different date. It typically gets done right after lunch, and you could possibly drive back if you left early to get your, in time for the fourth meeting. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it does end on October fifth.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Well, I'm going to, if I attend, I'm going to go virtual.
Yeah.
I am, it would be a non-issue for me.
And one thing about that, I did read that they, they will, may not have everything available to attend permanently. So I'm not sure exactly what they won't have, but they're still working on that.
Okay, Commissioner Foulke?
I don't believe I'm going to be able to attend, so I'll be fine.
Okay, so you'll be
I'll be, but I'll be back for the commission meeting.
Okay, so then we will keep the official commission meeting at, on the fifth, okay? All right. We have no correspondence. Does someone want to make a motion to it during the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
So moved.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?